All right, just got the thumbs up from the media booth. And welcome to the Monday, November 22 City Commission Study Session. We are meeting a little earlier than usual today in order to finish up some solid waste management plan issues that we're going to be discussing. And I'll turn it over to...
Yeah, if I could, I'd like to make a little bit of an introduction. We've talked about this topic some already, but Commissioners, I hope you agree with me that the level of detail, the level of planning that we're going to is more than we've historically done. And that's the vision that I've had for our long-range planning, for your benefit, for the community's benefit, and financial planning as well. So, we're going to get into a little bit of detail here, and there's some pretty big numbers, but, you know, I hope what you're seeing is, instead of planning for next year only, or instead of responding to an immediate problem that arose, we're trying to put together a long-range plan for you, that you have a sense of what's in the offing, and trying to get a baseline established. So, operation by operation, we kind of have a plan in place, and it doesn't vacillate near as much. It's more predictable, and we can manage to that as a group, you as a governing body as well, better. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor and Commissioners, Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. I just would echo a little bit of what Mike said, and then I'll turn this over to Mr. Co-Watch. We have a landfill master plan, and with Mike's guidance, and Jim, and all of the general services staff, we think we've made a pretty good attempt at documenting what we predict the next 25 years to look like. And obviously, that's extremely hard in today's economy. I was, we were, Jim and I were in a meeting earlier today when the landfill superintendent had told us that he had been informed by an equipment dealer that we could expect all parts that are steel or iron-related to go up an additional nine and a half percent in January. And that is coming on the heels of about 33% increase over the past three years. So, it looks to be another, basically, four years of right around a 10% increase in the cost of heavy equipment parts. And that's just the beginning of how complicated a 25-year capital plan is, but it is those kinds of considerations that we try to make intelligent assumptions about, and hopefully, Jim will be able to present that to you now. I'll turn it over to Mr. Co-Watch.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Co-Watch, Operations Manager for Public Works. We've got a number of slides here. We've tried to give you plenty of information. Hopefully, you'll find it useful. There are handouts by the back door, if anyone in the audience that would like to follow along. We're, we want to go through the long-range needs at the landfill, and kind of what we think our budget is necessarily going to take to maintain and operate the landfill. And then those tipping fees at the landfill impact our sanitation department, so we want to also talk about the sanitation department, the adjustment of disposal fees that they have to deal with in their fee structure, and then also a couple of emerging needs for our sanitation department that honestly were identified in our 2017 solid waste plan. So, we'll get started, and if you have questions, you can interrupt me. I just, I do want to try to get through everything and get to the financing so that I can get a feel for where you folks are at on the recommendations, because we are going to need to bring these back to you before the end of the year for an adjustment to the fee schedule. Debbie Pack and our Finance Director will need to do that, I'm sure, early next month. So, we'll get started. There's just a ton of expenditures at the landfill. As owner and operator of the landfill, we generate about 85,000 tons of waste a year that are captured in the landfill. We are on a schedule of about every five years, we need to build a new cell, new landfill cell. And we have to start the construction of it, actually fluff it in with kind of lightweight materials to start with, so there's some overlap between new cell construction and existing cell, cell filling. So, we've got new cell construction every five years. We are on the brink of having to collect landfill gas. Now, the regulations for that stiffened up this spring, but they also changed the manner in which they're testing. So, actually, our numbers went down this year, but we want to plan for the future in case we do meet that threshold. So, we'll go into landfill gas and the costs of collecting that in this presentation. Closure and post-closure, actually closing the landfill and taking care of it for 30 years. There's an obligation, a financial obligation, to be able to do that, and we're required by the state every year to calculate what that obligation is. Now, we don't intend to close the landfill anytime soon, but we are obligated to calculate that cost, and at some point, it does make sense to do a partial closure instead of trying to maintain a vast open space. So, we don't expect that to happen in the next 20 to 25 years either, but we want you to know, be aware of that. Our engineering fees, because of all the permitting and testing and environmental regulations, we spend anywhere from $70,000, kind of in a low year, to $350,000 in a high year, on engineering fees. And that includes the cell design and/or the cell construction. And then we've just got some really, really expensive equipment, and this is the part that's scary. Jim talked about the costs for equipment that we're seeing, maintenance of the equipment, but as well just the price of replacement equipment. We had a quote for a new scraper for $900,000 three years ago. The same scraper next year costs us $1.7 million. So, it's almost double in about a four-year period. Just the shortages in labor, equipments, materials, supplies, we've seen escalating costs in construction that we're all, we're trying to do our best estimate on what's going to happen. So, we want to make sure we're prepared, and we have money in the bank for those things that are necessary. And that's kind of my long introduction to everything that, everything Larry does. And Larry could not be here today. He's actually, with the holiday week and shorthanded, he's actually helping operate equipment to keep our landfill open to the public this week. So, he sends his regards. Basic landfill construction, we do have to line the cell with the material, either a geosynthetic or clay or both, to capture all the liquids so that they're contained and that we don't pollute our groundwater. So, that's excavating, and then lining the cell is an expensive process, and then we have to backfill it. And then as we're backfilling it with trash, we have to provide temporary cover to protect the vectors or the birds, the species, you know, make sure that there's not contaminants getting blown around the county. So, we have to temporarily cover it, and it's just a process of filling, covering, filling, covering. It takes a lot of soil, and that process takes about five years to fill up one of our cells.
Where does the dirt go that you pull out to excavate?
We reuse it. Well, we use it to, actually, as we're filling the temporary cover, as we're putting soil in, or debris in it, we use it to cover it up. But it's, that's, we need a lot more to cover it up than what comes out of the hole, because we can't excavate too deep or we get into the groundwater. So, it's just, it's kind of a, just a cake pan. It's kind of just, it's below the ground a little ways, you know, less than 20 feet, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
All right. Landfill gas, like I said, the regulatory changes this, this year, they were threatened under the previous administration, they're actually enforced under this one, dropped the threshold from 50 megagrams down to 34, and we were creeping up there and preparing to design and implement a landfill gas sometime in the future. But at the same time, they changed the way they sample it, and they incorporate oxygen into the testing procedure now. So, our numbers are actually lower. Next, next slide. Our numbers are actually lower than they were the year before. In the top half of this table, under 2021, you can see that our reading or our measurement was 17.9 this year, and it was actually 23.8 the year before that. And we believe that's just due to the sampling methods, not that we've had that much of a decrease in the actual inorganic or organic compounds being produced.
I was noticing in the, in the previous slide, it said that, you know, once that we had exceeded the NSPS threshold, that we would have to install the gas collection system within 30 months. I mean, is that, is that something that can be done in 30 months, or is that something that we go ahead and anticipate, and we have the design ready to go, and so it's just a matter of fitting it out and getting it built?
Yes. You can wait until you, we have time to design it and implement it in 30 months, but it's better to be, like you said, prepared and have at least an initial design in place for what you want to do, but you wouldn't necessarily be able to fully design it until you know what your, your existing conditions are.
It just sounded like 30 months didn't sound like, I mean, it didn't sound like a lot of time to me for a structure of that kind of complexity, but anyway, I was just, I was curious.
I would just say that the annual tasks that we do with our engineering consultant generally are geared, although they may have other purposes for reporting requirements to KDHE or whatever, they would, they would definitely influence our ability to respond within that 30 months. So, for example, Jim had a meeting today with the engineering consultants regarding soil and soil balancing at the landfill. That is, having enough soil for the current operation, given the way that we take it out and put it back in, and making sure that that, that plan works. It's very similar with the gas. We, there's a lot of requirements that go into maintaining the system that we have now, but all of that data would help us prepare for if we needed it to be designed. To short-circuit the, or to shorten, the shortened version of this is, we, we could probably do, much like the landfill master plan, a 50% engineering design of the landfill gas system. We do know how many acres and approximately how many wells that would take. So, it's something that we could do in the, in the future if, if that seemed to be, if we start seeing these, the NMOC column especially, if we start seeing that column in the next five-year Tier 2 test go up significantly, that may trigger us to say it may be a good idea to go ahead and begin design now.
Jim, you touched on one thing I was going to mention. Part of it is just that conversation with the consultant, and it is a little bit of a guessing game. They can help us try to anticipate what the results might be by way of the sampling guidance, the, what the threshold is, everything down to the age of our different cells and their contents, and, and so they, obviously, they can't give us a hard and fast answer, but they can help us make an educated guess of, is it likely that we're going to hit that threshold and beyond the clock, and if so, should we get started, you know, now, or do we think we can wait a little bit?
And the 2021 numbers were actually sampled this spring, and we are required every five years to get those samples. So, there's kind of a five-year window, and especially with our current numbers going down, we don't expect to meet that threshold in 2026. But we don't know what the rate of climb is going to be. In 2026, we'll be able to see that we were at 17.9 now, and we'll be able to see where we're at in '26 and make some sort of projection, but that could, depending on the slope of that curve, could be 2031.
And I guess that's, that's precisely where I was going to go with that in terms of, what does 17.9 in 2021 look like if you're doing it using the old standards? I mean, do we have any sense of, you know, how much of a percentage reduction? And I'm not putting you on the spot, I just think it'd be, it'd be kind of, I don't know, kind of useful to have to see how that correlates.
Right. Well, it's, it's kind of a mystery. If you look at the, the top half of the chart, we went from eight and a half to 11 and a half, to almost 24.
Yeah.
And that was spiking up, and we actually, if you followed that curve, we would have met 34 this year.
Right.
Now, we fell back quite a bit to 17 or 18, that we don't know how steep that curve is actually going to be.
Yeah.
So, even though we don't think we'll be there in '26, we, we want to plan for '31, which means having to build it and pay for it and have it operate in '33. So, that, or, you know, that, that time, that timeframe, that 30 months to get it underway, so.
The real question for the engineers is, where do they think that that NMOC number is going to be? Because as you can see from the, the chart, we were at 284, and that's starting to get where, if you look down into the 2026 Tier 2 and the 2031 Tier 2, that's starting to get closer to where that threshold meets, what we, what we would expect to cause us to go over. So, I think the next five-year NMOC number, if, if that stays in the low 200s, then it's probably safe to assume that we would get, gain another five years. If that goes back up toward the top end of that NMOC number, then there's a fairly good chance that we could trigger it in 2031. But, I mean, if you ask the engineers, which we did for this presentation, what would you say with all of the data that you know about our landfill today? And that is the 2026, not likely, 2031 possible, but right now, they're anticipating that most likely it would occur in 2036.
Is the natural history of a landfill such that there's a number of years at which the methane peaks, or does it just continue to rise, or gets to a certain point and then goes down? Because I know that depends on what's in it, but...
Yes. We had this conversation with the, with the landfill engineer actually very recently, in the last couple of weeks actually, and they are, they are still working on getting us an answer. My question to the engineers was, at what point does the pre-subtitle D landfill cell, the original cell at the landfill, when, when would that likely not be mined for methane? When, when would it, we would expect that to have just naturally declined to the state that collection would no longer be required? And the, their answer was, well, the short answer is, if, if the, if that landfill has waste in it, then it would, by state law, it would, and federal law, it would require wells be put in it. They are still working with state regulators to answer my question, at what point does the, the rate of decline sort of make that a gnaw? And if that were to happen, obviously, that would, that would drastically change the trajectory of the landfill, because that amount of waste makes up a large percentage of the entire landfill footprint. The cells that we build now are much smaller, and so, we, the short answer is, we're waiting on state regulators to tell us the answer.
But there's a lot of dynamics there at play, because if that has a minimal number, and that's factored in, that actually helps keep our number low.
Yes.
If they completely take that out of the equation, that could contribute to our number being more concentrated and going up. So, back to my prior point, we really need the consultants to work with us to kind of try to help us anticipate all this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, we attribute part of this decline to different changes in sampling protocol that, you know, just kind of a change in the rules that contributed to the number changing.
Yeah, we've been monitoring this closely for the last several years, and it's just, we were, we were seeing a spike in the readings before, and want to be financially prepared for this if it's required. So, all of our financial models assume that it would be required in '31, not necessarily that that, that is going to happen. We think it could be '36 with starting the payments and bonds and stuff in '38. Next slide, Jacob. And then here, here are the costs inflated to 2031 for design, construction, the quality control, and it assumes the 450 acre, 153 acres through Cell 21 that we have underway right now. And then there is an operational cost to keeping all of that system going, materials and all kinds of just routine maintenance, as well as probably a full-time employee. So, we've asked, as consultants estimated that at $170,000 a year. And there again, that's assuming 2031. Closure, post-closure, I've included a lot of just the legal references here, and what it means is, it's a financial obligation, if the landfill was closed this year, to close it completely, and then to take care of it for 30 years. We don't intend to close it this year. We don't see any reason, regulatory or otherwise, that we would need to close it this year, but you're required by the state just to say, well, what is it? Because they don't want to be left holding the bag someday if we did want to default on it and just, but taking care of it. So, right now, the estimate to close it and maintain it for 30 years is a little over $8 million. We do have a modest sum balance that's reserved for that at 867, so about 10%. We'd like to actually get that up higher, but when they look at the financial ability of the city to cover, they're not just looking at the landfill, they're looking at the city, and they think the city is good for $8 million, so. And there becomes a point when, when we get so many cells built, that we may want, may want to do a partial closure, just so that that unfunded obligation doesn't keep growing and growing and growing. But we don't see that happening for the next 20 to 25 years either, because our current plan is, we're working our way to the south, and in 2030, we want to get on the other side, the north side of the mound, and start filling in over there. And we won't necessarily be in a position or need to close any of that until Cell 21 and 22 are completely filled, which will be 30 years from now, or 20 years from now.
I think we've mentioned this before, but just for clarity to the public, that $8 million represents having to close the entire landfill footprint, not just a cell, but all of the cells that are at the landfill, and putting it into a maintenance state for the entire landfill.
Which we don't intend to do, but it's a, it's a state reporting requirement. Next slide. Our engineering fees, and we, we got into this a little bit last week with our master plan, but normal routine kind of maintenance stuff runs $70,000 to $75,000 a year. We were asking for $100,000 to do a waste reduction strategies investigation with the, the information that we collected from our waste characterization study. And then we also have $25,000 in next, in the next, next year for the composting feasibility study. And those go with our goals to try to reduce our waste footprint here in the city of Salina, in Saline County. 2023 is about $100,000 extra because of cell design, and 24 is the actual inspection and contract administration and all the things required with cell construction. So, our current three-year total is 486,000. If you inflate that by 3% per year for three years, and then add the $100,000 for the study and the $25,000 for the feasibility study, we're like $5,000 or $6,000 off. So, that, those are the only two additional items to what we've been doing in that next three-year contract. Okay, next slide. This is what, we tried to show you the life cycle of all of the heavy equipment at, at the landfill, to be the owner and operator of it. Some of these pieces of equipment do have 20-year life cycles. They can be rebuilt, or they can be, the tracks can be redone, or there's a kind of a replacement cycle to them. The loader has about a 15-year life. The bigger equipment has a 20-year life. The dozers, we've tried rebuilding those and that, for a cost savings, and it really wasn't what we would call a success, so we don't plan on doing that again. But they're extremely expensive, and it's extremely hard on them, the type of work that they do out there. We've showed, shown for every piece of equipment, kind of in chronological order, from the first time that they show up on our schedule, what the life of that equipment is, at least for the next 25 years, whether it's to be rebuilt or replaced or, or repaired in some manner. So, we've got compactors, dozers, scrapers, a water truck, a roll-off truck, pickups, a fuel truck, and a dump truck. So, it's, it's all pretty heavy stuff. Next slide. Here is the rest of the equipment, the heavy equipment at the landfill, and you can see by the total there that if we, the, the replacement and repair costs for that equipment's almost $27 million for the next 25 years. So, it's, it adds up to be a very big number. The lighter vehicles here at the end, the one tons, and have a 10-year replacement cycle, and just inflating those 3% per year 10 years or 20 years from now, the number gets extremely large. Next slide. We've got a lot of other stuff at the landfill that's required just to keep us in business. We've got portable fences, which are required to try to keep the litter from blowing off our property. When we switch sides of the mountain, or on the other side of the landfill, we actually need portable screens on both sides, so it'll be a pretty substantial investment. We are going to need to replace our scales. We still have the old dump remediation at the, the old shooting range that we plan on taking care of in the next year or two. We're required by KDHE to take care of those old city dumps, and that is one that has been on their list for quite a while. We had originally intended to take some of the fill, fill dirt from the river channel to cover it with, but that may or may not necessarily work. So, we're looking at using some of the dirt from the excavation out by Tony's Pizza as temporary cover, or permanent cover for that landfill now, the coordination with the construction work out there.
And if that is possible, that would reduce the, this amount. This amount assumes that we would have to buy the roughly 17,000 cubic yards of soil that we need to return the, the old dump to a, back to a readiness state that would meet the KDHE's requirements. If we don't have to buy that soil, we're able, or at least partially of it, then that $250,000 for remediation could go down. This could also include, because of the way they built old dumps, there's very large voids up there. So, there may be large pieces of concrete or big pieces of steel, and then the soil has sort of eroded around it, and so there, while overall, if you look at it, it kind of looks like it's, it's still a nice hill, but up on top of that, there's quite a bit of large voids. And the KDHE requires that we have 18 inches of soil over top of that, so that none of that material is showing and that there's 18 inches of cover. Of, of all the old city dumps that we have, this is the only one that is still requiring some remediation.
That was going to be my next question. I had no idea till I was on the commission that there were that many old dump sites in the city. So, this is, this is our last one to remediate.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got yard boxes on there, they just, they wear out, and they're, they're expensive and big iron boxes. Like Jim said, iron, iron materials are really going up. Perimeter fence, we've been trying to do $30,000 worth of fence a year just to kind of keep up with it, because we're, we're required to have perimeter fence around the landfill, and we're not in compliance right now. But because it's such a small quantity and the demand for materials, our last, we went to bid on it three times. The bid prices are about $50 a foot, where they used to be 20. So, $30,000 only gets you 600 feet, which is a ridiculous price. It's not a good value. What we'd like to do is wait a couple of years, see if the prices can stabilize somehow, and then do a big contract for the whole thing and get it at a reasonable price. So, we're showing $500,000 for all 9,000 feet in a couple of years from now. $500,000.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Any downside to not being in compliance? Are we incurring any fees or anything like that? Okay.
No, no, not yet. Engineering consultant, like I said, we, we listed those and then new cell construction. And I did find one blip in our slides that we originally calculated those with an inflation factor of three percent. This actually shows five percent, just because the prices for construction have been so unstable the last couple of years. So that's about a five percent increase every five years on our, our normal construction. Next slide. Well, if we don't adjust our fees, if we just stay at forty dollars per ton, how bad does it get? Well, this is, if we just, if we assume we have the same amount of tonnage, eighty-five thousand, we're planning for zero growth because we do plan on trying to reduce our, our footprint and we, we couldn't necessarily estimate how much of a reduction we're going to have, but we do want to estimate zero growth. So if we stay at eighty-five thousand and we charge forty dollars a ton, twenty-five years from now, we'll be over forty million dollars in the hole. So we have, we come to you kind of a year at a time saying we need three percent or we need five percent, but we want you to understand that this is, it's not unusual, especially in construction, to have three or five percent increases with the inflation that is normal. But then, especially with COVID and the construction costs, there's so much competition for materials and equipment right now because of all the federal money that's being dumped into infrastructure. It makes everything we do more expensive. So we've planned for five percent increases in our construction costs. And then we, oh, in the, actually in a couple of slides, or the next slide, we'll show you all our other assumptions. But if we don't do anything, it's forty-eight million dollars, forty-nine million dollars that will be in the hole in twenty-five years. So that's, that's not what we plan on doing. We do want to raise it two dollars next year. That's kind of the bottom line. Understanding to keep our fund balance positive for that full twenty-five years, we need to keep it at two dollars a year till twenty-thirty-eight. So it's five percent next year, but then it keeps decreasing and decreasing. But there are our other assumptions. For personnel, and we worked with Debbie Pack, she helped do the financial model, or she did the financial model for us, but those were the other assumptions. The only difference is the construction cost should be five percent annually. That was something that I missed.
And that proposed two dollars per ton, that's per year for those sixteen years?
Yes. Two dollars per ton per year. And then after thirty-eight, we can keep it positive and lower it to a dollar fifty a ton increase. And actually, you'll see how it affects our fund balance with those assumptions.
I'm not sure if this is where to ask this question or if it's later down the road, but I know Commissioner Peck asked, was it last week? When did we talk about this? Two weeks ago about, you know, what other communities we bring, you know, trash into, to our cell? Have we done a cost analysis that, you know, when you look at what it costs to open and close cells, and when we look at the cost of equipment, are we at least breaking even or coming out ahead by, by bringing in that tonnage from other communities? I guess that's a, a question I have.
I don't know that we've done a detailed analysis, but I think if the question is, should we just contract and, and focus on local waste?
Because if you're, if you're using your equipment more because you have additional waste, you're wearing your equipment out, you know, you're using more land, you know, at what point do we say it's not cost-effective to, to accept that other ways?
We've certainly had conversations about there's a baseline cost that we need to cover just to meet minimal operations. And so we're in need of some of that waste to kind of keep us at the baseline because it's not all scalable. We still have to buy that one point seven million dollar scraper, whether we're doing, you know, the, the amount we are today or eighty-five percent of the amount we are today. So we see that additional volume as a positive that's supplementing our, our operations. But I'll let Jim and Jim speak to that.
I, I think Mike hit the nail on the head that if, if we were to review this today and look at the out of, and I don't have the figures off the top of my head, but if we were to look at the numbers today for out of county or in county, we would consider the out-of-county waste cost positive, if that makes sense. It, I, I don't know that I would say that it is required for the operation, but the cost would not change, so we would simply have less revenue. And because the landfill also funds other departments, it's important, that revenue is important to the city. So I guess the answer is we would view it, at least right now, as cost positive.
Because right now, we, you know, and opening and closing a cell has become, you know, substantial. If we didn't collect that additional waste, instead of closing a cell every, what are we saying, five years? Would it be seven or eight years? I guess that's my question. So you're taking that two to three million and you're expanding it over time. I guess that would be something that would be beneficial to, to everyone, at least to me to, to, to know.
Well, that is something that we can certainly explore with our landfill engineering consultant. We have a, a task line that is called Miscellaneous Engineering Services, and that would be exactly the kind of thing that we would use that for. So we can certainly ask them to explore that and see what, see what the, the changes in those tonnages would do to landfill cell life and, and overall financial model.
And I'm not disagreeing. I know that's kind of what we've been told before, but these numbers seem to be, you know, and mainly with equipment, they're getting to be such large numbers that, what amount of tonnage, you know, helps us to?
Kind of the corollary, what's the elasticity of demand for the other, the out-of-area users? I mean, could maybe charge an extra fee to bring, come into our landfill? And how much resistance would there be to higher fee for out-of-county?
I, I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head, but just if, if I had to, if I had to sort of respond, I guess I would say, I've talked to you before about the, sort of the regionalization of solid waste, and they would certainly have to calculate in transportation costs and whatever that other landfills tipping fees are. Because we're in a, a pretty favorable location and we have, our rates are in the lower one-third, that's certainly a possibility. It's something that we could look at.
So along those lines, as you look at peer community or other facility fees, have you seen any fee structures that have a geographic boundary and a fee that differs?
None that I, none that I can recall. I, I would have to do research specifically to answer that question, but none that I'm aware of right now.
Well, there were a few. When we, when we did call, there were a few, and Hutch is one of them, that if it's out of county, because they charge, it's part of their property taxes for their landfill, so it's free for residents.
Yeah.
They do have a separate fee for people outside the county. And then I think it was Coffee County that also had an extra fee for outside the county when we were reviewing these.
Because those counties that are, I'm sorry. Those counties that are, that are bringing to, you know, coming to us from, you know, west and north of us, what would be their other alternative? Was it Topeka, Hutch, Wichita? Where would they have to go?
McPherson would be the, the closest, I believe. And actually, Jim, you were here when, when McPherson built their MRF and the tonnage for our landfill actually went down quite a bit.
Correct.
There was some, some, there, there had to be some calculations done on what it would cost to make sure that we covered our expenses with that reduced tonnage. And we are at a point now where it is covering its expenses, it is managing the tonnage that we get, but with all of the inflation factors for those other, those other items like personnel, health, operating expense, equipment and construction, the fees go up every year, even if we don't have any extra tonnage.
It may be helpful to go to the next slide, given the conversation.
Yeah, I see in McPherson at seventy there.
This, this allows you to see it. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna point that out. Number eleven, McPherson County is at seventy dollars a ton. We're currently at forty. So that would sort of put it into perspective. But I, I, I have taken notes and, and if this is your, you know, the direction you'd like us to explore, then we can certainly reach out to the landfill engineering consultant and ask them to help us do a fee study in relation to county, in-county and out-of-county wastes and then see what the financial models look like. And then if there are recommendations to change tipping fees, what those tipping fees might look like. And then, you know, depending on what that is, then we could reach out to those participating communities and find out, you know, what, what the impact that has to them and, and how they would address it.
And just so we're clear, we, the landfill is not tax-supported. Hutchinson, the example in Hutchinson, it is, but it's an enterprise function that it stands alone. So that's not to say that we couldn't, you know, have a varying fee structure, but just didn't want any confusion.
Right. It has to cover all its own expenses, and then it also is a contributing factor to the general fund to support the rest of the city, as are most of the enterprise funds. So you can see here the ranking, and this was prices as of last week. We called around and got everybody's current prices. It is not uncommon for landfills to adjust their rates every year or every other year, three to five percent, as I reported last week. Hutch raised theirs six and a half percent on their property tax this year, plus charging for their construction and demolition waste, so probably more than six percent. We're, we're right at the lower third or right at the state average when you look at it, or will be at the state average at forty or forty-two. Assuming that the rest of those landfills have inflation, which I'm sure they will, they will be raising their prices accordingly. So we're, we're still right in the middle of the pack. We're very reasonable compared to some of the privates that are like seventy-five dollars a ton.
And those are the only option for those areas?
Yes, for solid waste. This is, this is all of the solid waste landfills that exist in Kansas. So depending on where they are, and generally speaking, they're, they're sort of, they're, they're restricted because by the time you add in transportation costs, that would offset the cost of going somewhere to try to garner savings from a lower tipping fee.
And you might touch on transfer stations just a bit. I mean, when we talk about where waste goes, that is a variable. Doesn't really change the economics of it, though.
Well, McPherson is actually a transfer station. Olathe is a transfer station. They take the waste and then they, they collect it and then they, they actually ship it somewhere else after that. I know Olathe takes theirs to Wyandotte County, the big Deffenbaugh landfills and stuff in the Kansas City metro area. Where Hutch goes, I, do they take it to?
I don't have the answer to that.
Yep. It is, it's just a kind of a holding station. It's not necessarily a landfill. Does that cover it, Mike? Okay. Yeah, we're currently tied for seventh. If we raise it two dollars, we're actually sixth?
Yeah, tied for sixth.
Okay. It bumps us to nine, or do you have it eight? And I did have, on, on the original slides, I did have a couple small errors on there which have been corrected on the presentation. The bottom line should be eighty-six instead of eighty-five. So a couple of the percentages there have been adjusted as well. Next slide. So with our two dollar a ton increase for the next seventeen years, and then a dollar fifty after that, Mike asked us to see if we could maintain a positive fund balance of about a half a million dollars. And this model, you know, that's why, why we're kind of weird at seventeen years as far as two dollars. We're right at a half million dollars. Except for twenty-thirty-eight, we've got a little glitch in there. We're about a quarter million below. And we think that especially with the financing and the, we could offset that deficit for that one year, just on the way we purchase equipment and stuff. But just to give you an idea, and there would be a lot of decision points in the next twenty-five years on what the fees need to be. The assumptions about inflation and everything else are probably beyond our skills, but we're trying to give you the best big picture that we can.
And, and obviously, every year, we have to come back to you and, and request a comprehensive fee change. So this more lays out the twenty-five-year plan, but we're still going to come back each year to ask for whatever specific increase this twenty-five-year plan would recommend.
So admittedly, this may be an overstatement, a bit of an overstatement, but trying to bring you this plan rather than on an annual basis, just all of us kind of sit around saying, hmm, how do you feel about our rate increase this year? And we have a piece of equipment we'd like to buy next year. That, that's just too short-sighted in my estimation, and we can get by a few years till that comes back and, and.
I apologize if you put it in here and I missed it. What assumptions are you using on the amount of refuse collected over this same, are you anticipating that going up each year, going down, being flat?
Yeah, as, as Jim mentioned, so there's two things at play. We have the, the Solid Waste Management Committee's recommendation and your approval of the goal. And so staff has been busy in the last several weeks gathering all of the possible opportunities that we can take or that we think might be possible. Our intent is to present all of them, and there's, there's a large list. We shared twelve of them with you during the last study session. And since the waste characterization study, I think I've sent Mike probably ten to fifteen more possible ways that we could look to reduce the waste stream. Given that, however, we can anticipate an increase in the amount of waste that we take in each year. But we think that the, the, the amount of increase and the amount of initiatives that we do for the purpose of this plan, it is eighty-five thousand. We're basically using our current annual tonnage rate throughout the entire twenty-five-year period, if that makes sense.
Yeah, because Salina is growing, we are getting contacted by other counties to accept, cities and counties to take their waste, but we are going to have increased efforts to try to reduce our waste. So that, we thought the best assumption was just to assume flat, zero growth, rather than try to estimate a slow growth or even a decline, so.
I, I think that speaks to what Commissioner Hoppeck and Commissioner Ryan were, were talking about earlier in terms of making sure that we're covering our costs when we're accepting from other communities or other counties in terms of our waste collection. And just, I mean, being at seventy-six dollars a ton in twenty-thirty-nine, obviously, I'm sure that some of the other landfills will be increasing their tipping fees as well, but that definitely is going to put us at the, the, the top of the threshold. And it'd be interesting to know if that in and of itself would cause us to lose business.
It depends on what seventy-six dollars buys you. I mean, you know, we can all remember the five cent candy bar.
Quite frankly, here in the preface of the whole presentation, the cost of steel and the inflationary factors, I think you're too low at two dollars. Like two-twenty and, and then see where the numbers go.
Right. The, the two dollars is five percent next year, but if you actually, it's one point eight percent twenty-five years from now. You know, it's kind of like the dad my car bought for six hundred dollars in nineteen sixty-four. That same car is sixty thousand dollars today. So it's, it's just a matter of over time, the value of our money depreciates with these inflation costs.
I mean, we're considering what we're paying all of our employees across the organization. When you've got personnel pay and health, workers' comp in there at three and five, I expect those to change in the next year. So, so I think you're pretty conservative.
I, I think the other thing I'd, I'd say is, you know, just in different examples, in twenty-twenty, we did a one point four percent increase. In twenty-nineteen, we did a two point nine percent. The year prior, we did a three percent. The year prior, we did a three point six percent. And Mike, Mike had mentioned this, that previously, we were looking at this on a year-to-year basis and trying to, to judge where are we in terms of rate of inflation? Have we seen contracts change in the last twelve months? And if so, to what degree does that affect the overall budget? I, I think the numbers that, that are on the, that, on slide fourteen that show the percentage rate increases certainly are probably, well, they, I know they are more accurate because we've applied all of the data, all, all of the things that we could think of that are part of the operation of the landfill. So I, I think this just represents. So I think this just represents, and the other thing was that Mike had asked us to, at the end of the period, to get us to the target balance, which is a half a million dollars. And that this was the closest that we could, in order to hit that mark. But Jim mentioned the one year where we're going to have, you know, where it shows a negative. There's going to be decisions every year, changes in prices. I, it doesn't seem to me like, you know, many of the assumptions, two to three percent, they may turn out to be too low and we'll have to adjust as necessary.
And the other thing to consider is the possibility, if the amount of refuse being brought in over, let's say, five, ten-year period actually does drop, you know, that may influence your decision as to when you replace, you may not have to replace something because you squeeze five, six, seven.
Right, right.
Absolutely. A lot of these are going to be moving.
And we now have a model that we can make, that we can make those observations, make those adjustments, and on an annual basis, have that conversation. Compared to years past, it's this piece of equipment, this road segment, much more detailed and focused. And to say that we've factored everything in, what we haven't factored in is that closure, post-closure cost. We've identified that, and I guess the way I look at that is, number one, I don't think we're ever just going to shut down the landfill, lock, stock, and barrel. If we do, there's a whole bunch of expenses we won't have anymore that could be offset. It's more of a placeholder. We might have the opportunity to gain some ground to do individual closures like we talked about. And then the other big variable is that gas. If we get out to 2031 and get lucky enough that it's not required, that's certainly an adjustment to the model that would have to be made at that point.
And Mike asked me that question, what if we don't have to do it in thirty-one or thirty-three and thirty-eight? And I ran it again, and it was too late to get in the slides here, but it actually gives us a fund balance of 3.3 million in 2046. So it makes, postponing it five years makes a huge difference.
And that may be an opportunity to look at the rates and make those adjustments at that point.
Someone may come up with a cheaper way to capture it.
Yeah, and the benefit now is if the commission next year says, hey, you have two dollars, what happens if you do a dollar fifty? Now we have a model that we can run it and tell you exactly what would happen if we were to adjust that, so.
Okay, next slide. So that's kind of the question, especially, we would like your input on, so that Debbie can prepare the fee schedule for next month, is already comfortable with two dollars for next year, understanding that it's part of the bigger picture.
I like the idea of at least trying to plan way down the road. I imagine the folks who, whose business depends on the landfill being open probably would like to be able, make it plan a little bit easier, too, as far as the rates they're going to pass on to their customers.
I agree with the long-term modeling. That's a great idea. Two dollars is where staff wants to start. I guess that's okay, but I could go on the record and say I think it's too cheap.
Okay.
All right, well, moving forward, we did assume that you would approve the 5% for the landfill. That does impact our own costs for collection, the collection and the sanitation trucks. So we've got two issues. You know, we've had a beautiful tree canopy here in the city. It's hard to maintain it. Parks has two dedicated staff and very large equipment that makes it difficult to trim the street trees. And I was talking with Brett Lamer. He said that his, one of his tree positions has been vacant thirty-three percent of the time just in the last four hundred and forty weeks. Is that?
That's how many we've had, too, so seventy, whatever, sixty-four percent of the time.
Yeah, it's seventy percent been vacant. Just with two people and not having any redundancy at all, we need two people on a crew to operate in the streets safely. So we've worked closely with Parks and Rec, Jeff Hammond and Rick Martin and Brett Lamer, to try to come up with a plan to get resources on the streets to make sure not only the sanitation trucks can run, but the school buses, the Amazon trucks, the semis, all of the deliveries that are going on in the city. We have a nice round canopy in a lot of areas where the truck can get down the middle, but especially for our sanitation trucks, they need to get to the curb. We had a number of places where we've had to either trim branches or work with property owners so that we can collect every, every customer that we have now, and we can collect every customer. But like Brett said, that they have had very limited resources on trimming trees. Every year, it gets worse. And we'll get into the details here, but we would like to address this by adding some equipment and two more people full-time that could work in conjunctions, public works people that can work in conjunction with the Parks Department to work on the streets as well as the parks. Just a smaller boom truck. They would trade in one of their larger trucks, which is twenty years old, buy a boom truck for a hundred and twenty-five thousand with a twenty-five thousand dollar trade, get some more pole saws and chainsaws and the equipment. We would use our mulch truck and our current mulcher. By having four people on a crew working together, one or two people can be gone, but they can still go do work. Right now, when one person's gone, they're shut down and they can trim rosebushes. You know, they can't go trim street trees.
And we looked at this model multiple ways. We looked at it, what if we used a different technology, used two people and kept it within Public Works? And we compared that to this model that Jeff, Rick, and Brett brought to us and that we sort of worked out. And the benefit of this model is for our side, looking at it from our side, although Brett maintains the tree canopy, it's a huge concern to us for right-of-way trees, obviously, just by virtue of what Public Works does. But for the same amount of money, I gain additional work hours because the two departments are actually working together, combining our forces, using the same equipment to accomplish both right-of-way tree trimming and Parks tree trimming. So I'm not speaking for them, but they had assured me that they were, that they approved this plan, they helped write the plan, and I thought that was important.
Well, we've definitely fallen behind, and we did look at outsourcing or just a one-time catch-up tree trimming to fourteen feet. It was going to be over seven hundred thousand dollars last year or year before.
Last year.
Last year. So that would be a one-time deal and it would need to be done every five years. We think that this is a lot more sustainable program by doing it in-house, and we can direct and prioritize the work that needs to be done. Next map, or next slide, please, Jacob. Of course, the older part of town would be the higher priority, but this is kind of a zone map, five zones, working in conjunction between the public works, the right-of-way stuff, and the Parks stuff. The key focus or the point on this slide is the very bottom line, that Brett has been keeping an active list of current problem trees, and that list is over thirty-three hundred locations. So, and it's only getting larger. But we have, we have a problem, it's getting worse. We need to dedicate the resources. The equipment that we have right now is too large to actively swing around in the trees, and we've got power lines we need to deal with. It's just not the right, right, the right equipment. Smaller, more nimble truck with guys or employees mulching it. And the mulchs that we produce can definitely be used at the landfill for cover material and for roads, temporary roads.
I would just say, obviously, this all depends on our ability to hire these additional people, which obviously, we're struggling with now. So it could be that it could take us a while to be able to hire these people.
Well, and because it is just a common, common problem, not only for our sanitation trucks, but the other sanitation providers here in town, and a way to kind of spread the cost, we're looking at buying the equipment and actually funding these positions out of the solid waste fund, instead of the sanitation department. That that was factored into the model that we had prepared and included. So I want to make sure you understand, that is the funding source for the two additional FTEs and for this truck. Now, Parks does have an existing vehicle in their system, and they have a replacement budget or cycle, that replacing the truck from now on would be factored into their, their operating budgets. But the initial purchase of the additional tools and truck would come from the solid waste fund. Next slide. The other issue that was identified in 2017 is we had thirteen semi-automated Packer trucks, and we had room to put six of them inside. These are large trucks, they're diesel, you know, they don't like to work when it's real cold outside. They have hydraulic systems that need to warm up. We plug them in. We're actually getting some more plugins installed, hopefully, before the end of the year. But this, this, this problem compounded when we bought the automated side-load trucks. They're too big to fit in the, in not only our storage building, but they're too big to fit in our service bays and our wash rack. We are able to service them outside or send them to the dealer, and we are able to wash them commercially if we need to. It's just, it's not real convenient. These are kind of, you've seen pictures of them and you've actually seen them. The hydraulics and the engine is all exposed, and we'd like to keep ice and snow and those kinds of things, sunlight off of that as much as possible, just to extend the life of them. As you may recall, each one costs, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So just maintaining the, to reduce the maintenance, maintain them, make them last longer, as well as clean them up and service them. We'd like to purchase a new building. Next slide. And Jacob, this is where I'm going to need your help, because the laser won't show up. I want Jacob to drive the pointer for me, but the existing, can you point to the existing trucks down there? The sanitation trucks? That's the pinch corner that we, we park our existing trucks, and those are actually the new trucks. We can park six inside, as well as all of our cart storage is in that sanitation building. And we've got a bunch of extra carts now. We did get our other order for, for people that are interested in ordering new carts. But the salt racks next to where the trucks are parked, there's a salt rack location right there, and then there's one clear up in the northeast corner, right back up there next to the river, that require quite a bit of space, but they're spread out, that they aren't real convenient because they are spread out. We'd like to relocate the salt racks from those two locations and actually put a new building where it says proposed site for new building, right where the old Quonset hut is. It's an old nineteen-fifties kind of World War II building. It looks huge, but when you go inside it, it's a spider web of metal and stuff, has a real low ceiling. It's not real functional. You can't get equipment in there. All of the airspace is kind of wasted. It's because of the way the structure is, it's round and high just to support itself. So it's not real efficient. And we'd like to tear that down and put a big, nice Morton building right there that has taller doors, a wider wash bay, and a service pit for these bigger trucks. And it gives us more, actually, it makes the corridor wider back there for all these vehicles to move. And it takes them away from, I call it the pinch point down there where we're parking right now. It's a blind corner down where the existing trucks are, especially when we have snow operations and sanitation trucks park there, vehicles going back and forth to get the brine. It's not a very good situation. The other problem we have is the building right across the street is up for auction on Third Street there. Expect that building to develop sometime. I know you've had people entertaining offers or telling you their ideas about it. But all of, a lot of our staff park up and down Third Street, and if that building develops, we aren't going to have any parking. And we're already kind of flooding the neighborhood to the north there, and we definitely don't want our people parking so far west that they're over by the fieldhouse. So we've got a parking problem, too. So if we can remove the salt racks right behind our building and that, we can increase employee parking there and at least get some of those vehicles off the street. Next slide. That's the, that's the Quonset hut. It looks like a really big building, but the top half of it is wasted. We don't use it for anything. We store barricades and temporary barricades for parades and traffic control signs and stuff like that in there. They also have a small workshop just to make stuff. But we'd like to tear that down and replace it. You can see the salt racks off to the side as well. It's all behind a privacy fence. It's adjacent to the small facilities building there to the left, which is where our facilities people are housed right now, currently. Next slide. It's just a close-up of the, what we call the salt spreader racks. We put those on our trucks to spread salt and, salt in the wintertime when we're doing snow removal operations. Next slide. Here's kind of the proposed layout. We have six new trucks. We'd like an eight-bay facility with fourteen-foot doors, fourteen-foot tall, twelve-foot doors, except for the wash bay. Trucks can easily get in and out of them. We have two extra bays there to just hold some of the storage and stuff that was in the Quonset hut, the stuff that our street department needs on a daily basis. And then some of that materials will have to be relocated somewhere else. We'd like to relocate the salt racks here and also down by the current sanitation truck parking to a different location. Next slide. Here's kind of a front view of the building with personnel walk doors at either end, a service bay that has a pit where they can get under and work on transmissions and hydraulics and fluids. It has a wide wash bay door. Our current wash bays only have twelve-foot doors, and if you back a truck in there, you have about this much room between you and the wall. If you've ever been in a car wash, that's not very pleasant. So they wash one side or try to get it from the, from the back of the truck, or they turn it around and have to go in because it's two, two bays wide, but they have to use both bays to wash it. We would like to just get a bay that can store two trucks overnight, but you can actually pull in the center and then wash both sides of it safely. It's forty-four foot wide by a hundred and twenty foot long. The existing Quonset is sixty by sixty, so we go from thirty-six hundred square feet to a little over fifty-eight hundred square feet. So about a fifty percent increase in square footage.
Are you looking, you mentioned, Sammy, you're using Morton as a generic term. But are you looking at like a post-frame type of building? It's going to be all steel, or have you guys decided what kind of specs you're going to be bidding out on this?
The quote that I got was an all-steel building with metal, metal trusses.
The quote you got just for a working?
Well, just for a working estimate, yes.
Yeah.
And then I worked with a local supplier on just the cost between what a twelve-foot, a twelve-foot door and a twenty-four-foot door would cost, and whether or not that lightweight a building could support a twenty-four-foot door. That bay would also need to be isolated with either brick walls or some sort of weatherproofing so that we don't, it's isolated from the rest of the shop. But it would mostly be open, except for the wash bay. But a metal, metal building is what I was referring to.
For the purpose of budgeting.
Right.
When you, okay. Like metal as in trusses or metal?
Metal siding.
But that can be?
It can be post-frame or it can be metal. The building that I actually quoted to try to get prices was a metal-framed building and metal siding.
Okay.
And then we also had to price the cost of a hot water heater and a high-pressure sprayer, air compressor, some of those kinds of basic needs that they would need for a service pit and a wash bay.
I'm just thinking, if you were to put that out for bid, if you would spec it out as wanting all metal in terms of trusses and build on top of the concrete, or if you were actually giving the option for some sort of post-frame as well, seems like.
My thought was that we would bid the square footage and the, this basic size requirements, and if they meet the specifications, then we would accept the lowest acceptable bid.
Okay.
But that's, that's the general layout of the building. Next slide. The current fueling site, or if you know where our HHW is, or there's, there's currently just kind of a corner there next to the fueling site that has a ditch and a few small trees. We'd like to fill in the ditch with a pipe, cover it up, pave that lot, fence it, and then relocate all of our salt spreader racks over there next to the fueling station, because all of the trucks routinely are fueling up during their shifts, that that would be a convenient location to go put the spreaders on. a convenient location to go put the spreaders on and they would be kind of, they're only used during snowstorms and stuff, they take a significant part of a footprint of our yard right now that is not, not necessary during the summer months. We do plan to, we've, we've got a claim in on recycling some of the fence from the existing rodeo ground, so the gates and fence would be repurposed from stuff that was removed there. We would need to landscape it and we would also need to work with planning on a variance as far as the setback for this location. There's a twenty-five foot setback off of the street currently that we would need to work with them.
Yeah, this proposal assumes that we would have to go through the normal DRB process for all of the elements of this site.
And building this yard is, is included in the ultimate cost which we've calculated and it's fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars to relocate the racks with, with our staff doing most of the work, but we wouldn't need to purchase the pipe, or the underground pipe and the asphalt to pave the lot, asphalt or concrete. Okay, well, the big question is, well, what is all of this gonna cost? So we've got some sample calculations for a, just a metal framed building or, I apologize, Commissioner Peck, but just a generic building, that to house the, the equipment, it's not gonna be used as a workshop or a work area, it's just to keep our trucks out of the elements, keep them warm during the winter, a place to wash them and service them and relocate the salt spreaders is three hundred and fifty to three hundred and seventy-five thousand. For infrastructure, it's not uncommon to bond it for twenty years, so that would be fifteen cents a month per sanitation customer to bond that three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Next. Solid waste disposal costs that the sanitation department, Sean Dunston, what he paid this year versus a five percent next year would be thirty-seven thousand dollars. You spread that over our fifteen thousand customers twelve months a year and it's about a twenty cent increase in cost just because of the disposal rates. Next slide. We try to keep, because the sanitation rates, it's half for this and, and we, the special pickups are a prorated amount, we try to keep it an even amount, we'd like to, instead of going thirty-five cents, we'd like to go fifty cents and really with the inflation that we've included, we bumped it up another point nine percent just to round it off to seventeen fifty. That makes a total increase of two point nine percent for next year from seventeen dollars to seventeen fifty per month, fifty cents a month and that pays for the tree trimming equipment and the labor because they're coming out of the solid waste fund, it pays for relocating our salt racks and building a building and also pays for the increase in the disposal costs at the landfill.
So I apologize if I'm telling you things you already know, but, you know, we have two operations, we have the landfill operation, we have the sanitation operation, so if you're a City of Salina sanitation customer and you're, that, the sanitation service pays the landfill fee, so the pass-through of that landfill fee plus the other things that, that Jim described, all make it on your sanitation customer bill. If you're not the customer of the Salina Sanitation Service or if you're another provider, that your cost increase will be realized on the landfill side of the house with what we previously talked about. So, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you are a Salina sanitation customer, this is the increase that you would see because the service is covering the landfill increase that we talked about previously.
Correct.
Right, correct, that's correct.
Does the cost of the building, does that include sprinkling the building?
No.
Will it require being sprinkled?
If not.
Because when we talked about the recycling center and storing the, the trucks in there, we, I was under the impression we were gonna have to sprinkle that.
It, it changes with the use of the building, when we first proposed this, I went to the building official and asked him to tell me whether or not that was a requirement, so he looked up in code based on the fact that it's, that we're only using it to store the building, it, we don't have customers coming, like the recycling center has two full-time employees that are always in it and we have customers going through it and that's why that building would, we can't store the recyclables inside the building because it isn't sprinkled. But that is also why, because this one doesn't have that, we would not be required to have sprinkles, sprinklers in it. But I did, I did speak with the building official to verify that.
And the service bay and the wash bay are both temporary uses, they're not full-time and he, he said that would still count as a storage building.
I agree with, I still didn't agree with the having to sprinkle the old building, which I thought was, but.
I think another factor in that was that we were operating the vehicles inside that building as part of that operation too.
Yeah, we, we run exhaust equipment and would've had to sprinkle it if we wanted to store them inside.
And so for the wash bays, are you envisioning those just being walled off with metals well or would those be a, a different type of material?
The, the wash bays that we currently have now, I, I don't know, I know that they had not been rebuilt since I've been here, but they're, it is metal truss building and the ceiling and, and there is some protection where those trusses are, but given the age of the building, it's showing wear, so I would say that we would probably have to, and I, I spoke to Troy about this, I, I don't know the name of it that Troy described, but they can put in a ceiling in that wash bay to help protect the metal that's in there, but I would think that we would do it something similar to what we have now, which is concrete block with steel trusses above it.
Okay, next slide, Jacob. And here's kind of the summary, just all of, all of the different things we've, we've kind of spelled out for you. The potential for landfill gas collection in 2031, more likely in 2036, new cell construction every five years, equipment, vehicle and facility costs, just for the landfill in the next ten years is ten million dollars, for the next twenty-five years is almost twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars. Our engineering costs is anywhere from seven hundred, or seventy to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The boom truck, we'd like to buy next year and then the unfortunate thing is when our streets superintendent checked on it, there's a ten to twelve month delivery time on the trucks right now, so even if we get it approved, we can't, unless we find one on a lot somewhere, if you ordered one today, it would take ten months to get here, so this may be a 2023 initiative, but that was, that was just bad news we found out last week, but we would like to move forward with having a positive plan for addressing the tree canopy here in Salina. As we discussed, we're proposing a five percent increase or two dollars per ton at the landfill next year and subsequent years and then for the storage building, solid waste fees, we do need to raise our sanitation rates from seventeen to seventeen fifty or a two point nine percent increase. And we will, stand for any more questions.
Questions for Mr. Coach or Mr. Troy? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
You bet. Since we do have time today, is there, are there any members of the public that have questions or would like to speak to any of the materials that we've covered today in the study session? Okay, all right, well then I guess we will go ahead and conclude the study session and thank you very much gentlemen and we will resume in this room at four o'clock for the regular meeting. Thank you.[1148.83]
All right, welcome everyone to the Monday, November 22, 2021 Salina City Commission Meeting. Before we get our meeting underway, I would like to confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Would all who are able please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, recognition of November 27, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Salina. Leslie Bishop, Salina Downtown, Inc., will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hodges and City Commissioners. Thank you for letting me be here today. The Small Business Saturday Proclamation. Whereas the government of Salina, Kansas celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small bus—31 million, you got me. Small businesses in the United States, they represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas, small business employ 57% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, 94% of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make in their community, and whereas, 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go small, to independently-owned retailers or restaurants. Consumers also say they shop small because of the personalized experience, unique products or services, the sense of familiarity that small businesses offer, and whereas, 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season, and whereas, 59% of small business owners say Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year, and whereas, Salina, Kansas supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed that Saturday, after Thanksgiving, is Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of Salina—Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 27, 2021 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you so much. This is always a wonderful declaration to be able to make, and I can tell everyone firsthand, there's a lot of good shopping to be done in downtown Salina and of course throughout the community, but I can personally vouch for downtown last week. Small Business Saturday, are there going to be any—is there going to be anything special going on downtown for Small Business Saturday, or any holiday open houses that are going to be coming up?
Well, Small Business Saturday, many businesses will offer specials and maybe even some treats and maybe some surprises when you come downtown. And then on December 18th, for all the procrastinators in Salina, there will be a big shopping day on Saturday, December 18th.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and thank you for all your hard work on the Parade of Lights this year. It was a wonderful event.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member of the community to come up and share your opinions with the city commission. I would ask that you identify yourselves by your first and last name, keep your remarks limited to three minutes, and address things that we don't have on the agenda today. With that being said, I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak at Citizens Forum?
Chad Farber, Salina. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving. I love this week of Thanksgiving. It's a beautiful time for our country. I was unable to attend last week, and I was watching online, and I wanted to bring up a few things. I'm still concerned about the whole issue I brought up a couple of weeks ago with the transparency and the culpability, whether it's the commission, the manager, HR, whoever it is, dealing with the fire department issue. We saw in the news this week where the chief was placed on leave and consequently tendered his resignation. I believe that was effective today, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm hoping that Chief Royce was not used as the fall guy, as to say, everything fell upon his head. I'm hoping that is not the direction our HR department or whoever is dealing with this. There has to be more people who are aware of this, and one of the things that was brought up a couple of weeks ago, not just with the transparency, not just with the accountability, but there seems to be a lack of communication within the city governing, not just this body, but from the manager, from the different departments, and I would say that we as a community need to see that communication opened up to you guys, to us, to the department, to the staffs, whatever it is. We were—many of us were shell shocked a couple of weeks ago when we first heard about the project over on Magnolia, and I know we talked that to death a couple of weeks ago, but that should not have been an abrupt surprise to you guys. You guys should have known about that, and you should have been prepared, had statements, maybe prepared as well. And obviously, I'm not there, so I can't speak for your feelings. I can't speak for how that would make me feel, but I would have felt as though I was left out, and it was a bombshell dropped upon me by some of the—and that it came out in another commission meeting. That makes you guys look bad to the community. So I would encourage greater communication, whatever needs to be done. If it needs to be addressed from this, from a different perspective, from HR, whatever, communication needs to be addressed within our city government. The second thing I want to bring back up, and we haven't talked about this in a little while, is the petition that was voted on. The majority of the citizens within Salina have voted upon it, and we just received word today that over 33,000 taxpayer dollars have been spent with attorney fees and different things, fighting this petition. And I understand the questions of being unconstitutional, I believe is how it was brought up. That, of course, is subjective. The petition was brought before other attorneys, counselors, before this was ever brought before the people, and in their opinion, in their idea, this is a constitutional petition. And I would again ask the city to do whatever it needs to do. Stop spending taxpayers' money to offset the vote of the people. I realize I'm out of time, but again, happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. Thank you, Mr. Farber. Is there anyone else who would like to speak here today? Is there anyone else who would like to speak here today?
Hi, I'm Carol Reed. Chad kind of reminded me, and the last time I was up here, I talked to you about the gender and the race bias test that you were going to give, and that we spent $10,000 on hiring this company. So I just kind of wanted to—I was thinking that maybe we ought to watch and kind of see how that test comes out. I hope those results will be shared with the community so we can understand what type of test this is, and so I would just hope that at some time when this $10,000 is spent that we have an accounting for that and some sort of results shown on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed. And just to clarify, because I was not—I don't believe—I was not at that meeting, but that's in terms of our retention study, correct? That was in—
Actually, our pay plan.
Pay plan, yeah. So definitely the results, when we get the pay plan results back, those will be made public as we discuss those findings and take appropriate action on them. So thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Sherry Harp, Salina. I'd like to second that on Chad, when he had said that we need to bring that petition to a stop and stop using tax dollars for that. We had 5,000 people that voted for this petition to go through, and I think it's really unnecessary to go any further with it, and I ask for you to drop it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I don't see anyone online, so we will go ahead and close Citizens Forum, and we don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that brings us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of November 15, 2021. Item 6.2, award project number 21017, 2021, Major Concrete to Bryant and Bryant Construction, Inc., in the amount of $447,715.60, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $470,101.38, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Bryant and Bryant Construction. And item 6.3, award project number 21008, 2021, Street Marking to Twin Traffic Marking Corporation of Kansas City, in the amount of $44,976.44, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $47,225.26, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Twin Traffic Marking Corporation.
Thank you. Are there any items that a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Nope.
And if not, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve consent agenda items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 amended budget.
Thank you. Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. State statute requires that a formal public hearing be held for any budget that we pass, and especially for an amended budget, and that a public notice be published in the paper 10 days prior to that hearing to give the public opportunity to see what the amendments are and the opportunity to speak on those amendments. The notice of the hearing will include the date and the time and the location and the limits of what we are setting for our 2021 amended budget. Each year, the staff reviews about this time of the year, as—close to the end of the year as we can—the budget compared to what we've actually spent, and at this time, we found three funds that appeared to—that will require amended budgets. Those are the Business Improvement District Fund, the Sales Tax Economic Development Fund, and the Special Parks Fund. When we come back for the hearing on December 13th, we'll have the detail of what those amendments might be and what we've seen as the causes of those amendments. After publication, these amounts that we publish cannot be increased, so we'll have to make sure that we have those numbers tied down by then. The action for this evening is to authorize the publication of the notice of public hearing, which sets December 13th as the date for the public hearing on the 2021 amended budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2021 amended budget. All right, we're available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Pack? And to be clear, this is just to authorize the publication, that we're going to have the hearing, it's not—
To set the date. This sets the date. Yep. Yep.
Not talking about any specifics at this time.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public? And I don't see anyone online, so I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, I move we authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 amended budget, setting December 13th as the date for public hearing on the 2021 amended budget and establishing a maximum limits of the 2021 amended budget.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. We'll see you back on December 13th. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, authorize the city manager to execute renewals of agreements for administrative services for a self-funded health and prescription benefit, an individual and aggregate stop-loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas.
Ms. Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. To recap, the City of Salina chooses to self-fund our health insurance, and in order to do so, we also purchase stop-loss. Both the—in order to do that, also, we contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide both the administrative services, which means they are the ones in charge of managing our claims and processing all of those, along with providing customer service to any of our employees, providing us a network to receive discounts, and also, last year, we rolled over the prescription benefit management within the program as well. In addition, we purchase stop-loss, which provides us that financial security. Otherwise, we could be in danger of, you know, one potential claim bankrupting our fund. We have been with Blue Cross Blue Shield since 1997 through that self-funded model. Again, last year was the first year we did roll the prescription coverage within that plan. This year, the renewals came back overall favorable, however, the stop-loss rates did increase. There's a lot of different moving parts there that—long story short, all things considered, with our claims trending the way they are and the administrative fees decreasing, along with the stop-loss rates increasing, which happened across the state of Kansas, not just for our plan, all things considered, we came out relatively strong, and we tried to make that as straightforward as possible. There is a summary attached that is labeled Staff Summary in the upper-left hand, as well as a summary that Bob Charlesworth with Charlesworth Consulting provided us as well. The different options that the renewal allowed us to consider would be renewing at our current level, which is $150,000 stop-loss, individual stop-loss, meaning that would be for one claim. Once it exceeds $150,000, then the insurance picks it up. First renewal option would be increasing that stop-loss to $175,000, and then also a $200,000. So while increasing our stop-loss would save us in premium specific to that stop-loss, overall, when you factor in those claims and then the total cost of what would be projected, we really don't come out that much ahead by taking on that additional risk. The other thing you'll note, the estimated rebates, and that is directly related to the prescriptions, those are anticipated to increase because of the lag that happens. Again, last year was our—well, this year was our first year that we were with them, so some of the drug spend that's happened this year, we won't see the rebates until one month or after. And then that's why it's consistent with the other stop-loss rates, the proposals to increase those. That's why it stays the same, is again, very little experienced so far this year, but anticipated increase moving forward. That summarizes as best without going into all the specifics that was provided to you in your report. We do believe that Blue Cross is a good provider. The rebates that we anticipate receiving, as well as the network discounts, have been solid and continue to save us money that we might not have in the event we would opt to jump into a different third-party administration plan. I will briefly go over the options available, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions, and then I also wanted to give our consultant, Bob Charlesworth, the option or an opportunity to share anything that he wanted to, along with this information. The identified options by staff were to authorize the city manager to renew at the current level at $150,000 individual stop-loss, to move us to $175,000 stop-loss, to move us yet to a higher at $200,000 stop-loss, to postpone any consideration or approvals and give staff directives on any other information that you would like to consider, or to postpone to a specified date and time, and also give direction there on further consideration. Staff does recommend option one, but I also wanted to give Mr. Charlesworth a chance to talk with you about this information.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Charlesworth, Vice President of Charlesworth Consulting, Kansas City, Missouri. This is our office downtown, Crossroads District. Thank you for having me today. Actually, Natalie summed it up quite well. What we've been experiencing throughout the state of Kansas with Blue Cross of Kansas is the large claims have been increasing, not just for the City of Salina, but for all clients. Obviously, one of the biggest culprits is pharmacy costs. One of the reasons, if you remember last year, we asked the city to roll the pharmacy into the stop-loss program is for that protection, because before that, we didn't have a limit on what could be spent on pharmacy in a given year for a given person. So that was rolled into this year. The looking at for—to go to a higher amount, like Natalie mentioned, is kind of like a teeter-totter, if you will. You could save a little premium on increasing your risk, but then your claims between that corridor actually go up. So it levels the same monies, same monies that you're budgeting, very little impact on it. So what that suggests to me is that the city is where they need to be. Historically, when you go to higher individual stop-loss amounts, it's rare to go back lower. So if the city moves to $175,000 or $200,000 per individual per contract period, it's going to be really difficult to ever go back down. So the reason is to take those is to save significant numbers, or when you have multiple opportunities to maybe save some additional claim dollars, to move that way. At this point, it does not appear to be so. As was noted out in the document, you kind of need to understand a little bit on stop-loss, excuse me, is that when Blue Cross looks at the City of Salina on their renewal—and we do negotiate this, by the way—we just don't take it and just run with it. They don't like my numbers, and I don't really care. I still dare share it with them. So we negotiated it down, but what was important to see is that when they weigh the cost of stop-loss for the city, they look at their entire book of business weighing at 85%, and if you're an actuary, it's kind of interesting how they do that, and therefore, the city's own experience is only 15%. So if you had—a—we've had this before in this very city, where you've had horrible years, but yet you got very little increases. Why? Because you're only accountable for 15% of the large-type claims. And so adversely, right now, you know, we typically have a few claims that do exceed the $150,000 mark every year. On conversely from that, it's just, you know, when we have great years, we see a rate increase. And so you yell at me, and that's fine. I just don't have all the answers for that. We can go out into a different market to look at those things. The problem with that is, Blue Cross does not allow that any longer, so you either want to be with Blue Cross, or you need to go somewhere else. This is a really good plan. I was really pleased with the city commission last year moving the pharmacy over. I think that was a smart move. You see the drug cost, we see the drug costs. I was just telling Natalie, we have another public client that gets massive pharmacy rebates every quarter. That's great that they're getting rebates, but it also suggests that the high utilization of brand drugs is excessive. So it's kind of that teeter-totter effect as well. You want good rebates, or do you want lower claims costs? I want the lower claims costs. And really, the city members that are part of the plan use generics dramatically, which is a great sign. So it's very appreciated on this, and as you look at this, the funding level is essentially flat for next year, and so I'm excited about that, very excited about it. I didn't know if there was anything specific else you wanted to talk about on this. I'm more than happy to address if you have specific questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Charlesworth?
The only question I had, and I don't know if this is Natalie's number or if it's yours, the current stop-loss, you show it a little over 5 million, and then we show it dropping to 4.9 million. What was the reason for the drop?
That's the expected claims level.
Right.
That is calculated by Blue Cross of Kansas, and I do my own calculations, but it's fairly close, actually. They look at your demographics, they look at your claims history, they look at any outstanding and large claims that may be going on, and then they take that and project that going forward for next year. And so that's really—they're looking at that, they're going, we think, based on the current programs that we see today, we think our claims are going to go down a little bit.
So that's calculated by Blue Cross?
That is correct. That is a Blue Cross number.
That's what I wasn't sure.
I did do that my own calculations, and it's fairly close to that as well.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was ours or if that was it.
That is yours. That is specific to this city?
Us, based on Blue Cross's calculation. Thank you.
That's an important number, because the worst-case scenario is 130% of that for the worst case for the year, and we'll talk about this after the first year, but remember, we designed a health fund, and that's important to see where that number lands, to see if we want to do a premium holiday or something like that in the future. So.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Charlesworth?
Well, thank you very much. I admit, I find this all pretty incomprehensible, even when I'm doing it for my own family, but it looked to me like our employee premiums are actually going to be reduced a little bit. I mean, it looked like they're pretty similar to last year. We're definitely not seeing an increase, though.
You're not seeing an increase.
That's fantastic.
The funding is very solid, and Natalie, double-check that. Where'd you go? I don't think the rates changed at all. No.
No, I just wanted—I just wanted to confirm.
That is correct.
Whenever I see good news and insurance in the same document, it makes me—
Yeah. Well, it seems to be in a consultant when you bring good news.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
So.
And if I could, just to add a little clarity to that, this is a renewal for our expenses that we then try to cover by our contributions and the employee premium. So having a flat renewal is good news. It gives us the opportunity to leave things unchanged, and then, as Mr. Charlesworth mentioned, we, this year, worked up a health fund reserve balance policy so that once we can complete this year, see what the renewal looks like, see what our claims history looks like, then we can go back and look at our reserve balance, and he mentioned a rate holiday. One of the things we built in that policy is if our reserve balance is starting to exceed the target, which we recalcul—will recalculate on an annual basis, then we might have an opportunity to have a rate holiday where we don't charge a premium for a month or whatever that timeframe may be. Too soon to say just yet, but conversely, our rates haven't gone up so much that we're recognizing the need to increase premiums. We'll just have to see how our performance plays out.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you for having me.
You too. Any other questions for Natalie?
I appreciate the worksheets. They were very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, you—Ms. Fisher, you made it as understandable as anybody can. I appreciate the color coding and everything you can do to explain it like you would to a first grader. I appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Some of the thanks need to go to the city manager as well.
All right, well, credit where it's due. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay, anything else that you wanted to add, or? Anything else that you wanted to add or? Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? I don't know if there's anyone online who would like to comment, but if you are online and you would like to comment, just please raise your virtual hand and we'll get you Not seeing any. I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement to provide administrative services for a self-funded health benefit plan and prescription benefit management with individual and aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas with the non-grandfathered 50/50 cost share plan structure with individual stop loss at $150,000.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute renewals of agreements for administrative services for self-funded health and prescription benefit and individual and aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas, maintaining the $150,000 level. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Safe travels to you, Mr. Charlesworth. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for a time and attendance system with Andrews Technology HMS, Inc.
Ms. Fisher.
Thank you again. Mayor and Commissioners, before you, for your consideration is an agreement with Andrews Technology for a time and attendance system, including equipment, software, maintenance, training, everything needed to implement and maintain a system going forward. As we have talked in both during strategic planning and then in other conversations, we currently do not have a time and attendance system with the exception of a time clock that's present at Kenwood Cove. The primary goal in moving towards this is simply efficiency. Another, I guess I'll say, benefit would be the additional accountability and reporting and record-keeping that automating this would allow us to do. A little bit about the process. After we did receive the directive that we could move forward with such system, we went out and requested proposals, went through the process of interviewing and receiving demos of the individuals that submitted or the vendors that submitted. And with the committee that was involved in that, the winner, so to speak, or the one that we would feel most comfortable recommending is Andrews Technology. I provided a little bit of background. I will say the one thing that stuck out about them, in addition to having some public sector expertise, is their price with the equipment included all travel and unlimited training going forward, which we don't very often see that. So that is a huge benefit for both staff as well as employees, supervisors, anything moving forward. As the costs break down, you will notice that a large bulk of the expense is the purchase of the actual equipment. Andrews Technology has been instrumental in assisting and trying to determine what those needs would be. This was more of an exercise than we originally anticipated because we currently don't have this structure in place to model off of. So a lot of conversations with executive staff, some employees, and then our team revisiting what it is that we were needing to accomplish and where. The current approach of obtaining the time clocks does assume that no one would be using their own personal mobile devices or any other advices, devices to clock in and out. However, this software does have that capability in the event we would get to that and individuals would feel so inclined. But again, we went into this to provide the infrastructure without that being what we were relying upon. In addition, some of the functionality is the software that schedules, that provides for very complicated schedules to be able to be implemented to tie into this, for example, our police department and possibly the fire department. Little, you know, different than a Monday through Friday, eight to five type schedule where their minimum staffing has to be obtained and some of the add-ons from what we originally thought, this pricing does include that. As I mentioned, if you look at year one, the one-year equipment purchase and implementation, $66,000, 6606. And then the software and the hardware fees, along with the maintenance going forward, just over $48,000, $48,710. Andrews did also provide us a five-year rate without increases over that. So the estimated five-year investment would be 309,556. The other vendors, I included their estimates. However, I will say, I don't know what that end result might have been because we did not have some of the additional conversations in specific to how much fees would have been in the event they needed to come on-site and train and how much training going forward is recommended. So I will just add that. Although there's numbers here, they did not include any travel training expenses and some of that additional support that Andrews has committed to. I think that is about it in terms of my report. I am going to briefly go over the options before you, and I will mention also, our contact, the president of the company, Jamie Blondell, is available via Zoom in the event you would have any questions or want to get any additional input from him. I will briefly mention the options. We are asking to consider approving a motion authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Andrews Technology for Nova Time software and time clock equipment in the amount of 309,556, which includes implementation and annual support, maintenance and fees for five years and providing that the city manager may also authorize the acquisition of additional time clocks or equipment and related software needs deemed necessary during the implementation of the time and attendance system, not to exceed $15,000. Alternatively, approve a motion authorizing the city manager to execute that agreement, but for one year with the amount of 114,716, along with the ability to authorize acquisition of additional time clocks or equipment-related needs, not to exceed $15,000. Or approve a motion authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Andrews Technology with amendments as you deem necessary or appropriate, or postpone consideration of this and provide direction on what additional information you would like us to bring back. Another option would be to not take any action and we would continue operating without any time and attendance. Like I mentioned, we do recommend option one because understanding that, the multi-year agreement does help us budget and plan. So with that, I would stand for any questions as well as provide Mr. Blondell a chance to share anything with you or you to ask him questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fisher. Are there any questions for Ms. Fisher before we turn to Mr. Blondell?
What would be the timeframe for implementation?
Estimated timeframe would be about four months and there may be some variation there and that might be something to solidify with Mr. Blondell as well. But that's based on our reviews of the timelines and what was provided in a sample plan, we would estimate about four months. During that time, a lot of it would also involve involving the departments and different personnel to come up with what is going to meet their needs to allow them to do what they need to do and provide management tools. So some policy implementation, you know, it might also be a matter of figuring out how the scheduling and some of the other criteria needs to be associated with the data to make the system do what we need it to do.
I've got a question. Will we be retroactively changing Kenwood Cove and Tony's Pizza Event Center to use the new software so that everything will be using the same hardware and software?
Yeah. Good question. So I'll start with Tony's Pizza Event Center. Since we outsourced the management of that, they're not our employees and they have their own system. Back when it was the Bicentennial Center and they were our employees, they were the only facility at that time that had time clocks.
I got you.
As far as Kenwood Cove, yes, we would be transitioning them over so all of the data is the same then.
Okay. And did, I may have missed it, I think you touched on it earlier. This time clock, equipment and software, would it or would it not be applicable to some of the positions like in first responders that have kind of non-traditional shift times? It will be able to be adapted for their use as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's going to be some of what happens over the course of that implementation period is working with the departments and the personnel to make sure that we have it set to meet their needs, but yet do what we need it to do from an efficiency and record-keeping standpoint.
And there'll be policy decisions associated with that as well.
Yeah. The one thing I'll add that I didn't cover is, as with any system, we know there's going to be some human error. People forget to clock in, people forget to clock out, or maybe they need to respond out in the middle of the night and the last thing they're worried about doing is coming down to clock in before they go take care of business. There's also some management tools at the supervisory level that can do overrides and fix those things. But the nice thing is there will be audit controls, so we will know why some of those things are being fixed. They can make those adjustments or overrides, but also add notes as far as why, why those are happening.
Good. One or maybe two questions. Is this also tracking leave in addition to time and attendance?
Yes. Yes, it will track leave. It will also be able to provide leave information to employees that if they haven't looked at their last pay stub and they don't know what their vacation amount is, they might be able to submit their vacation requests directly from the devices or to see what their leave balances are.
Then part two, how far back do you go to give the new system, you know, information to use as base information?
So, and that might be a better question for Mr. Blondell, but there is a bridge that has been created that connects our payroll system with this system and the data will have to be transmitted back and forth. So it will be current with each pay period.
Do you go back like a year? I mean, because obviously leave is carried over and can you just set a date and import the information as of that date?
That is my understanding, to make sure we have accurate data from the time that it's live, that those balances are what they have available on any given date that we say, okay, it's good for you to use now.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for Ms. Fisher? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Blondell, I'd like to welcome you here to the city commission meeting. Is there anything that you feel that we haven't covered or that we haven't asked that you'd like to make us aware of?
Well, Natalie did such a good job introducing the project and the functionality, so I appreciate that, Natalie. Yes, I work with Andrews Technology, I'm the president of the company. We're very much looking to beginning this project with the city. We will be specializing in time and attendance tracking, meaning the work hours for all the different city departments. Each department will be treated like its own mini-improvementation, meaning that we can set up rules within the system at a department level, all the way down to an individual employee level. In addition to tracking the work hours, we will be tracking the sick vacation days, allowing employees to, perhaps today they might have to wait until they get their pay stub to see their balances and then question a discrepancy with a supervisor. Going forward, they're going to be allowed to, either at the time clock, at a computer or at a smartphone, if you allow them to interact with a smartphone, see these balances and drill into the history as to why they have this much time off, time left. And then they can request time off that goes right to their manager for approval. So requesting time off would be the second piece of this. And then the third piece is the scheduling, as Natalie mentioned. And within the system, we have standard scheduling that accommodates most departments and advanced scheduling, which is typically needed for public safety, police and fire, and sometimes parks and rec would use the advanced scheduling functionality, which opens up three features. Shift swaps is typically needed. Sometimes employees might need to trade shifts with one another. So that feature would be included as part of the scope of work. Scheduling by certification, qualification, seniority, meaning when a shift opens up, there's a specific rule set that determines who gets that shift. And so that is included with the scope of work as the system will tell each supervisor or department head the right person to put into the shift based on the rules. And then the third feature is scheduling alerts. So when a shift opens up, we can broadcast that shift out by email or text message to employees, one at a time in some seniority order, or to a mass number of people and the first person to reply back gets it. So all of that is included. And yes, Natalie, thank you for also mentioning the travel and the unlimited training. And I should also mention that the support hours are 24/7 from our firm as well. Just wanted to add that.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Blondell?
Nope.
Well, thank you very much for being here today. Appreciate it. And, sorry, Mr. Schreger?
I'm sorry, I was just going to put Ms. Fisher on the spot a little bit in terms of the number of full-time and part-time employees we have that would be in this system. I don't know that we reported that as part of the staff report, but it's a startling number.
Yeah, we anticipate approximately 400 classified full and part-time employees and seasonally adjusted for up to 350. So that's, I mean, again, the seasonal won't be active from January to December, but it does, our agreement does account for that. One other feature that I didn't mention in terms of the time clocks, and I think it's just because it's old news for us, but the system that we have negotiated the price on, those are biometric clocks, meaning they're scanning fingerprints, two different fingerprints, whichever employees opt to have memorized, so to speak. That is how they will be clocking in. In the event we move forward and allow a smart device, those will have the geofencing associated with it. So it just rules out any concern that someone might be trying to clock in from being at home in bed rather than at their work location. So we thought those were pretty important features.
The other point I was going to make, you've heard me say before, but this definitely is one of those back-of-house items that I described as part of our strategic planning and have been talking about for quite some time. With an organization our size, the number of employees that we have, and then if you only saw all the paperwork that goes behind all that in terms of putting the schedule together on the front end, turning in payroll, verifying payroll, it's amazing to me that we haven't gone here sooner. And frankly, it was due to cost. I mean, the immediate conclusion was that we couldn't afford it. But this number is workable and we feel like we've got the best product and at a very good price.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. Mr. Blondell, I did have one last question in terms of implementation timeline. I believe that Ms. Fisher said three to four months. Is that what you're thinking on your end as well?
I would say three to four months for the timekeeping component, and we might want to add 30 days on for the advanced scheduling. Typically, we'll make it through the majority of the time and attendance before the advanced scheduling begins. There's just some foundations that need to get done before advanced scheduling can start. So I would say probably closer to four to five months with the advanced scheduling also being live.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Appreciate you being here.
Sure. Thank you for letting me join the meeting.
You bet. Any other questions for Ms. Fisher or Mr. Blondell? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that have questions or would like to comment on this item?
Hello again, Mayor, Commissioners. Chad Farber here, Salina. Is this going to alleviate the problem that we have just seen with the fire department clock, time, whatever, scheduling issues that we have? I don't know if anybody here can answer that or if this is the whole reason that this process is being put into place.
I don't know if I can speak to the whole reason that the process is being put in place. I think it was something that was a recognized need for quite a while and we just didn't take the steps to implement it. I would really hope that by implementing this, that we would avoid situations like we've seen in the fire department. And I don't know if you have anything further to add, Mr. Schreger?
I think that's fair. The one thing that I would add is- The one thing that I would add is not only the, the time clock system and the, the accuracy of it, but the policy decisions that are going to have to be made behind that to, to set up the system in the first place. And Mr. Blondell mentioned shift trading. That, that's something that we'll talk, or talk through and make some decisions on. So, now I agree with what the mayor said, this has been in the conversation prior to the fire department issue. I'm not prepared to go into detail on the fire department issue, but there'll be a higher level of accountability, there'll be a higher level of accuracy, there'll be consolidation of data instead of countless different places for that data to reside. So it's certainly a large step in the right direction.
Good. And I, and I think that's, like you said, the right direction that, that we are going. Ms. Fisher brought up the word accountability, you did as well. And she also brought up the ability to audit certain areas. And, and I wanted to confirm, I know that's a kind of behind-the-scenes policy-type deal, but I would hope there are procedures in place to audit each individual portion so that we don't find ourselves back in this particular situation again. Again, I know that's behind the scenes, but just encouragement for policy. I do think this is a good step in the right direction.
Yeah, and I, two things in, in that regard. A lot of times, whether it's this software or other types of software, there's what's called an audit trail. And so you can figure out how a change was made, how something was authorized, and, and so that guarantees the chain of command. And then I think what you're referring to more is just a kind of a, an audit on an occasional basis. But if, if the policies, and Mr. Blondell knows the details better than I do, but if the policies are in place and the software's working correctly, it's going to red-flag issues as they arrive. We're going to have to deal with them. And the audit trail's going to say, who was the individual that signed off on it?
Yes, that's right. Any change made to the timesheet or the schedule will all be tracked in the audit history of the system.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you very much for your confirmation. Would anybody else like to comment on this issue? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Andrews Technology for Nova Time software and time clock equipment in the amount of $309,556, which includes implementation and annual support, maintenance and fees for five years and providing that the city manager may also, also authorize the acquisition of additional time clocks or equipment and related software needs deemed necessary during the implementation of the time and attendance system not to exceed $15,000.
We have a motion in a second to authorize the city manager to enter an, into an agreement for a time and attendance system with Andrews Technology HMS as described in option number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Blondell. Item 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider the acceptance of the offered right-of-way easement and restricted asset access dedications from Standby Quist to serve the Lakeview Estates Edition Number Two.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is the final step in the review of the proposed Lakeview Estates Number Two subdivision, which is a replat of a large 150-acre tract that's located on the east side of South Ohio. The proposed subdivision is bordered by a large drainage dish on the north, by the Knox Sand Pit on the east. The Stone Lake Edition is directly to the south and Ohio Street forms the west border. The proposal is to take this 34-acre tract and divide it into 12 building lots. Two of those would have frontage on Ohio. The remainder would have internal frontage and access. And the good news about this particular subdivision is that Ohio Street is fully improved to full city street standards, so there's no perimeter street improvements needed to serve this development. There are no questions about the condition of the perimeter street. The plat that is before you shows a single public street connection to South Ohio Street. That is, the street names have now been finalized, so that is going to be known as Lakeway Drive. And that would provide a public street connection to the internal lots. That street would turn, would go eastward and then connect with the Second Street, Evening Bay Drive, which would extend southward and terminate in a hammerhead at the south edge of the subdivision. There's going to be restricted access along Ohio Street except for Lakeway Drive and a driveway, which you approved as part of the site plan for the assisted living facility. As I, I noted in some of the earlier, the ordinances and the preliminary plat, there were different street names, Anchor Drive and Boy Lane. Those have been finalized as Lakeway Drive and Evening Bay Drive. Those names have been reviewed by the fire department and emergency responders and they don't find them to conflict with any existing street names. Again, we have nine lots in Block One. Three of those will be for the assisted living facility and future expansions. There are six townhome lots. And there's two lots set aside for future multifamily and one lot on Ohio for an office site. And then there's a fourth lot, which is designated as an access easement, both for Mr. Byquist Residence, which is located east of Ohio, and it also serves as an emergency access lane into Stone Lake. This property, in addition to benefiting from the reconstruction of South Ohio, also benefited from an interceptor sewer line project and a waterline looping project that was done in 2005. So this property is fully served by water and sewer. It has a built-in drainage solution because the sand pit serves as a regional detention pond. And rather than constructing and maintaining their own, they can drain into the sand pit and pay an impact fee to essentially reimburse the city for its cost of acquiring drainage rights in the sand pit. There are no other infrastructure issues associated with this. We did want to point out that because there's an existing house that's there on Ohio, the engineer could not line up Lakeway Drive with Baroque Lane on the west side of Ohio. But the streets are offset by 150 feet, so that meets the design standards in the subdivision regulations. So the new dedications you're looking at this evening is 60-foot of right-of-way for Lakeway Drive and Evening Bay Drive, restricted access dedications along Ohio Street except for the two openings and the south emergency access easement. They have provided easements for the fire hydrants and extensions that need to be located on the assisted living facility. There will be, in addition to special assessments, there's going to be a cost recovery fee for the Ohio Street water line and a drainage impact fee for draining into the sand pit, and that's to help the city recoup its investment costs. At your November 8th meeting, you did authorize preparation of a special assessment feasibility report for this subdivision. And so this final plat is, is the final piece of that with these dedications that would allow them to move forward with installing public infrastructure. The Planning Commission approved this preliminary plat at their November 2nd meeting and found that it conformed with the preliminary plat and all approved documents. And so this comes to you for consideration of accepting those right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications. So you could do that this evening and authorize the mayor to sign the plat, or you could decline to do that and return this to the Planning Commission stating your reasons for not wishing to accept the proposed dedications. With that, I'd be open to any questions. We do have Mr. Byquist here and also his design engineer is here if you have any technical questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Andrew, any questions for staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant by the commission? No? Any questions or comments from members of the public? All right. I'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion or action.
Mayor Hodges, I move that we concur with the actions of the Planning Commission and move that we accept the offered right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications and to authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city of Salina.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes 5-0. Other business?
One, one other new construction on South Ohio. For those of you whose pets call Town and Country Veterinary Home, you really got to go by and see the new place. I mean, it's, you know, we talk about new business, but it's good when a, an established business expands and, and presents a better product. I think pets are going to start making up reasons to go to the doctor because they're, they're not going to want to come home when, when they go down there. But it's, it's just nice to see our established businesses expanding and getting bigger and better.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait. After wishing everyone here a happy Thanksgiving, safe travels, whether it finds you staying here or going someplace else, have a wonderful holiday. Now I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
And what, we do not meet?
We do not meet next week. It is the fifth Monday, so we don't have a meeting next week. So we will see you all at the December 6th.
Sixth, I believe.
December 6th meeting.
I move adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you December 6th.